Melissa's restarting her computer. She wasn't hearing the sound. So she'll be right on.
I'm going to bring up my, okay, my map is up for whenever we need it.
Okay.
And I can show that map that Peter sent anytime you need it. Hello, Peter.
Hi. Good evening.
We're both falling down on the Zoom job, Peter. Neither of us has a shelf of books behind us.
Yeah.
Just art.
That map, Judy, that's not for tonight.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but I'm glad you can put it on the screen when we do do it.
Yep. Any part of the document, actually.
It was just that one map. That's the critical one.
Yep. And I've got the, I've got the ArcGIS up so we can look at whatever cases we need to. You know, I was looking at the coordination, the coordinates. A lot of my stuff is New York State plane, but the orthographic photographs aren't. They come in NAD something. The ones I get from the state.
That's for the clearinghouse, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can probably change anything that I need to, but the thing that I've, the only thing I've ever found that's really wildly out of sync is, of course, the county parcel map. There's nothing I can do about that. So whatever method you guys have, I certainly would like to know about it.
Okay. Yeah, the parcel viewer I was showing Chris today, where they show the wetlands relates to the property line, the parcel viewer is 500 feet off.
Well, I'm not surprised. We know that lines that should be down the middle of the road are often in the middle of a house. Some of that may be whatever they're using in the way of coordinate system.
I think they're having some issues right now. It's been a little crazy.
Yeah, well, it's mostly that they built it out of documents and they didn't use GPS, so.
Hi, Peter. Hi, Judy.
Hi, Brian.
Hi, Brian.
Plea.
Hi, Ashley. We see you.
Hi, Judy. How are you?
Okay.
Just trying to help Melissa.
Yep.
Double shoot.
I just want to wait.
Are you in?
Yeah.
Somebody has got their microphone turned on who doesn't need to. Leah Hess, do you have your microphone on?
Don't know. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
We will.
I'll mute until it's time.
Thank you.
Everybody else looks like they're muted.
What I have found, Ashley, is that if you have everybody muted on entry, that's fine. And if you then turn off their ability to unmute themselves, then it looks like the members of the board would have to be invited to unmute themselves anytime they muted themselves, which is really.
Yeah, that's the problem. That was the problem. We had the week that Connor couldn't get unmuted. And because there were so many people, he wasn't on my screen, so I didn't see that he was trying to get unmuted.
Right.
We're looking. Connor didn't have a heart attack. He was epileptic.
Yeah. Well, I mean, the difficulty is that people in the audience have to be disciplined. Although I suppose you could mute somebody forcibly from your position if you had to.
You sound like a school teacher.
Guilty as charged.
How's my COVID-19 hair looking in this shot? Good, Peter?
Long.
Long. Hey, James.
Hello.
James.
Yeah, see, almost everybody's coming in unmuted. It's a problem. You're going to have to ask everybody.
Well, it is 7 o'clock.
Angela Spinelli needs to unmute. Needs to mute, I mean.
Yep, I'm going through right now and muting all but the board members. Although it's not letting me mute Angela.
No, she just did.
There we go. Okay.
Okay, so it's 7 o'clock, and I'd like to call to order. The August 20th, 2020 meeting of the Woodstock Planning Board is a Zoom meeting. And we do have a quorum. So are there any additions to the agenda? I don't see Melissa. Melissa?
He was having trouble. She was having trouble with her computer. She's starting it.
All right, well, I'll just keep going.
There she comes.
Hi, Melissa.
Hey, Melissa. Hey, Stuart.
He didn't want to add anything to the agenda, Peter.
There she is. Hi, Melissa.
Hi, Peter. Sorry, I was having computer audio issues.
Okay, good to see you. Okay, so I've called the meeting to order. And just asking if you had any additions to add to the agenda.
Nope, I caught you guys with my only addition that you thought. Yep, so we're good. Thank you.
The first thing is a letter from the Tree Committee describing the importance of saving our heritage trees. And the letter is to the Planning Board, but it's also to the Library Board for them to make sure they take care of their trees. The next item, well, first of all, we have the minutes. We have three sets of minutes, which if anybody on the board has any issues with them, if not, I suggest we accept them.
Move to accept the minutes.
Okay, all in a favor? All right? Okay.
Thank you.
So next is a letter from Spinelli, and it's a disturbing letter about issues on the David Green property. But unfortunately, the truth is that none of those issues are in the Planning Board purview. So as important as those issues may be, they are just not something that is in our purview or in our review. So having noted that, so our scheduled business, the first item is David Green, which is SUP 17-0469, which is a review and approval of driveway modification plan. So at the last meeting, we looked at the plans and we discussed it amongst the board that, that the plans were what the board required and that the positioning of the parking spaces was correct and the size of the parking spaces was correct. But we did decide not to make a movement without it being on the agenda as a public hearing or, you know, for the public. So if any member of the board, I know that he's not here, I don't see. Connor's not here. Connor was the one who did the site inspection and seemed to think that the plans were according to what we requested. So does anybody on the board have any issues with the parking arrangements on the site plan for the David Green boarding house?
No.
No. Well, then Stuart, if you would like to go ahead and make a resolution for us, we can entertain that.
All right, so I'm going to make a motion at this time to approve the driveway modification plan for a special use permit application under David Green SUP 17-0469 for conversion of existing single-family home into a five-bedroom boarding house in the R3 zoning district at 21 Delizio Lane in Woodstock.
Okay, hold on. We're just approving the plans and telling David we're on board with it, but I believe David would like our signature on something. David, if you could unmute yourself.
Yeah, yeah, this is, this is a change to a site plan.
So we're just, what I'm going to do is just write up a memo that we're on board and we're continuing forward. He'll be back in front of us, but this is just the driveway.
Well, let me, let me back up and hold the motion for a moment. What's the status of otherwise of the special use permit application? Does it extend beyond the driveway, driveway and parking?
The driveway is the first process. So this is just the first step, and then he'll be back with the rest of it, right, David? Am I explaining this correctly?
What, what else is there besides the driveway? My understanding is that's the last thing the town is requiring of me.
What Ellen had said to me is after the driveway is done, then you'll be back with more in regards to boarding house and then everything else for special use permits. The driveway doesn't technically require a special use permit from the Planning Board. This was just to get everybody on board with the process.
But what about the use of the buildings on the property as a boarding house? Have we resolved on that yet or not?
No.
All right, so I'm going to withdraw my motion at this time and put up another motion just.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Don't apologize. That's, that's, the motion is now to indicate to Mr. Green that the Planning Board approves the driveway modification plan portion of what is before us, and we reserve on everything else.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay.
Who seconds it?
I'll second it.
All in a favor?
All right.
All right. Okay, the next item on the agenda.
Am I allowed to ask a question?
Sure.
So my surveyor would like a, he requested that I ask you for a letter that indicates that you're comfortable and satisfied with the drawing he submitted to you people, to the Planning Board.
I can draft something.
Yeah, yeah.
And the Planning Board will approve it at the next meeting or edit it.
Okay, David, yep, that's, that's the idea of what we've done.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep. Okay, the next item on the agenda is called Place 99 LLC SPR 20-03270, which is a sketch plan review for site plan modification application to move the trash pickup for the site of the Garden Cafe tenant from Three Rock City Road to the front of Cafe at 6 to 8 Old Forge Road in the HC zoning district in Woodstock. So I remember the case for when we, it was originally before, so when we did the site plan. Best I can remember, we approved to put the trash in the back alley. And then I guess it was to be brought out for pickup. I didn't know that it was on Three Rock City Road, but I assume that this is the Garden Cafe asking us to approve putting it in front of their places.
No, it's not.
Okay.
It's not the Garden Cafe that's requesting this. It's the owner of the building.
The owner, Peter.
It's the owner, Marianne Place, and I, I believe you have like all the documentation and photographs regarding the request. I mean, if you need like additional documentation or photographs, you know, as to what our concern is, I have some right here and we can, we can look at them. You put me on screen sharing and I can just, you know, put it up in front of the board. But the request is to get the trash off the sidewalk in front of the bus stop, right? Also in front of the building that is occupied by Win Morrison Realty, right in front of their front door, and put it back to its original location, right? So that, you know, it's not such an eyesore and a nuisance for both the tenants and the community.
Just a second. I have a question, Melissa. Who was the original SUP issued to?
I believe it was issued to the previous owner of the business. Now, I might be, I might be wrong. I don't have the documentation. Maybe Melissa.
M and M.
Melissa, that question.
It's M and M Family Ventures and from 2015.
So only they can ask to change the site plan?
Are they still in business?
No, M and M Family Ventures is who we bought the building from.
Oh.
So we're essentially replacing them, so I'm making the requests.
Okay, so the, the existing SUP is in your name?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So I'm not quite sure. I'm sure Brian could help me on this. I'm not sure how it got moved from the alleyway to Rock City Road. Because that, it was on the site plan to be in the alleyway. So there would have had to have been a change of site plan to put it on Three Rock City Road.
That is correct.
So how did it get there?
What do you mean, how did it get there?
Well, how did the site plan get changed from having the trash in the alleyway to being on Three Rock City Road without a site plan review?
It is in the alley, correct?
I think the history was that there was a dumpster in front of where the gate is at the Garden Cafe. And there, from what I understand, there was maybe a school, maybe it was attached to church, and they didn't want a full-time dumpster to be in front of the fence. We're not asking for a dumpster in front of the fence. We're just asking for the garbage from the cafe to be picked up, that one-time pickup in front of their establishment.
Okay, I understand now. Okay.
Leah, it looks like Leah and whoever's with her wants to say something. Melissa?
Yep, working on it.
Thank you.
She should be unmuted soon.
Okay.
Good. Hi, Leah.
Hello. Thanks for having us. So I didn't know anything about the site plan. I'm not the owner of the building. I'm just a tenant. And when I took over, we were told that the garbage would be stored in the alleyway and then on the evening before or the day of, the garbage would be put off on Rock City Road to be picked up. Once it's picked up, we bring back the garbage pails. I was told that prior to Marianne and Chris as landlords, that it's been on Rock City Road for 23 years. That's the only information I have on that. I think they chose that area because the sidewalk is wider, so pedestrians can go, but if you were to put it in front of the cafe, the sidewalk is quite narrow. I think that's why they chose Rock City Road versus Old Forge Road. And especially if a garbage truck is on Old Forge Road picking it up, it would block traffic for a little longer than Rock City. I mean, these are assumptions, but that, this is the information that I have on that location.
My name is Kristen Everhard, and I have, I'm Leah's business manager, but I have been the business manager of the Garden Cafe since it opened, since Pamela Brown opened the cafe with Chris Michonis as the owner. The garbage cans have always been stored in the alley. There was never a dumpster. It was, the cans were never in front of the cafe. There, if you look at the sidewalk, as Leah mentioned, there is no room in front of the sidewalk. People wouldn't even be able to walk up the steps of the cafe. The cans have always been on Rock City Road.
What time of day is the pickup usually done?
We have, it's around 9:00 AM. So on Sunday night in the evening after Win Morrison is closed, we like to bring those cans out because we have enough staff to bring those out. And then our new ownership of the, the waste management, they're there by 9:00 o'clock. And then before Win Morrison opens, we like to have that back into the alley so we could use that.
So it'd be a minimal amount of time that the cans would actually be.
Yes.
On the sidewalk, right?
Yes.
George, do you want to speak on that?
Yeah, I'd like to speak on that. Actually, that's not our experience. The, the experience is that the cans, actually the pickup was on Tuesday. It's just recently been moved to Monday, so the.
That's not, that's not an arbitrary thing. That's a thing that the, that the, the company, the garbage company, the collector decides and tells us what day our garbage gets collected.
All right, regardless, I mean, there's a tremendous amount of garbage that ends up on Rock City Road, and it's right in front of another business, which doesn't seem to be fair.
That's in front of the other business, but they're.
Excuse me. Excuse me.
Not on Rock City Road.
Excuse me. Excuse me.
Okay.
One at a time.
Yes, thank you. So it's my experience that there is a line of garbage on Rock City Road, right in front of the bus stop, right in front of the other tenant. And it's just not fair. It's not right. We're not asking them to put the garbage out in front of their business. There's a garden area that has plenty of room, there's seven feet of depth and 40 feet of length at the garden area, you know. It's out of the way. It's not on the sidewalk. It's not at the bus stop, and it's not in front of another person's business, you know. So I mean, that's, that's, that's the position.
Hi, Judy. Judy has her hand up.
Is the, is the garbage truck willing to, that's the loop that goes past the church, right?
Right.
Correct.
Will the truck go there?
I don't know. I'm not sure because I don't know how, how quickly they pick up those cans. And I know that we've been told by the fire department that no cars should be parked there. Nothing should be in the way so the flow of traffic could get down to that area. I don't know the, the rules of the town. I just rent the place. And this is where, you know, once I bought the, the business, this is where I sold the garbage would be stored, and this is where we would bring the cans out. I did not make this decision. I've just been following for the past five years, doing it that way. We do try to keep it as neat and as aligned as possible and try not to be invasive when we do so. We are a commercial business. I mean, I just, I, I don't know what more to do but to do it as best as I can.
Are there, are there any objections to moving the garbage cans to the proposed area?
There. The history has been that the Rock City Road in front of Win Morrison has been used as a staging area by the cafe. The garbage starts to be put out on Monday morning, that they put out the paper, and then they start putting out the cans, and then Tuesday.
That's not true.
Usually, it is true. I have pictures, like lots of pictures. And then Tuesday, it's picked up. And then sometime, it's a very small company that they're using, so if the garbage truck is down, it might not appear until Wednesday. We've even had it go until Thursday where we have been.
It happened once, and a truck broke down.
I'm talking, Leah. Please let me finish.
You are, Marianne. Go on.
So all we're proposing is that the garbage not be put in front of Win Morrison, in front of the realtor where they have all of their picture windows. They've been living because of this.
Okay.
All we're asking is for the garbage to be put in front of the fenced area, and there's lots and lots of room. And I feel that the cafe will be way more conscientious of how they handle their own garbage if it's in front of their establishment.
Okay, well, I'd like to comment on that if I may.
Yeah, sure, Brian.
A couple of things. I'm familiar with all parties involved here. And I'm also familiar with Garden Cafe now and the previous owner. To be honest with you, when this came up on the agenda, it made no sense to me. And the reason it does not make sense is because, again, I'm very familiar with this space. They get A-plus grades on health. The town of Woodstock has had a rodent problem. Garden Cafe and, and the way they run the business is excluded from that. They are incredibly fastidious. This has also been protocol for over two decades. So it's just, it's not making sense to me. So I checked around with the town of Woodstock a little bit, and without going into detail, I was, became very concerned about some of the things I heard regarding this request. So it is my opinion that it makes no sense for Garden Cafe to have to put their garbage in the front where the town square is when everything is working perfectly now. So I see no reason to entertain this.
Well, it's not, it's not working now. It's not.
We're talking about a change to a site plan here. Before we do that, would all parties be willing to experiment, trying, putting it in a different spot for a couple of weeks and see how that works? And then we come back and change the plans to match what works? Because it seems to me if the truck comes by Monday morning, it shouldn't be a problem. It certainly, the truck isn't there long enough to block traffic. And if it's only there Sunday night to Monday morning, I don't see that it should be such a big problem. But could we just try it?
Yes, absolutely. I'll, I'll write up an agreement and we'll just try it for a month, see what works, and we can reconvene.
Okay.
To be clear, to be clear, that's the loop that goes around the green, right?
Right.
Yes.
So the one question that I have is whether that's a problem for the garbage trucks.
We don't, we can't answer that right now. We, we can, we can call them tomorrow and we can ask them, but we can't answer that. I can't, we can't sit here and say tonight that they're going to say that that's okay. Plus, the other thing is I would really ask that before anybody makes any of these suggestions and agrees, George has been in this picture, no disrespect intended, for, I mean, less than a year. He doesn't know the history of the cafe. And I would ask that the board walk by that space and take a look at the size of the sidewalk and where the garbage is placed. We can give you the same, we can give you pictures of what the garbage cans look like outside as well. And it's not in front, they're misrepresenting that it's in front of Win Morrison. It's not in front of Win Morrison, and their storefront is on Old Forge Road, and they have the whole corner, and the cans don't go in front of their, in their storefront. And I just feel like this is yet another, whatever. I just feel that this is a little bit of, of an outreach, and it's overstretching. And Leah has done nothing but tried to comply and make things work with. but tried to comply and make things work with, in this relationship. She doesn't want garbage to be disturbing anybody. But there is no disturbance.
George, can, George, can you share some photos?
I can, I can.
You know, we can share some photos too.
I'm asking George to share some photos. The cafe when Pam was there was small. It was one unit. When Leah took over, she took over the next unit and the wall was knocked through and she has the whole garden area.
I'm aware because I was there the whole entire time.
Much to your, the cafe food is one, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Cafe food is wonderful. And this is, all of this garbage is a testament to how well you're doing.
Well, Mary Ann, we know, we've discussed the garbage. We changed
Just two weeks ago, you changed the garbage bin.
Because we had a discussion about it. We have a new um, uh, waste management.
And we did have rats in our building. I, I spent $6,000 to get to exclude the rats from coming into our building.
Take the photo down, please. I need to see the participants.
Okay, folks, we, we have to get back on track here. This is just a site plan uh, review about changing something on the site plan. Um, it doesn't involve anything else to us.
Okay, I've got one more question. Forgive me, Peter. Is there litigation going on right now between the parties?
Yes.
Okay.
It's only because the cafe is not paying attention to our lease, so they had
Have they ever been delinquent on their rent?
Yes.
That's not the point.
Please answer the question.
That's not the point.
You brought the acquisition, so answer my question, please.
Why?
No.
That's, it's, it's, it's
Irrelevant.
Don't answer the question. I'm guessing the answer is no.
Okay, folks, order, order, order. We've gone far enough.
Peter Cross, I really appreciate your um, consideration.
Okay, Stuart has a question or a hand up.
Yeah, it's just uh, one thing that struck me. Does it, can anyone tell me what type of garbage truck this is? Is this like a large packer truck? Or is it a pickup truck? What is it?
It's a large truck. I could send you, I could take a picture on Monday. I could show you the cans. Um, I could show you the pictures that we had. I'm sure that was a holiday weekend.
Hold on, I just want to know what type of truck. The reason I ask is that
Yeah.
I, I'm sorry for cutting off. I just want to get my comment out. Um, Rock City Road is a double yellow line road and if a garbage truck is in one of the lanes picking up cans from the present location that are put out, traffic can still get around it. But if you have a gar- a garbage truck in front of your business on the Forge Road, isn't that a much more narrow uh, road? And if a garbage truck's in there and has an emergency vehicle going to get beyond it? That, that's, that's one of the questions that I have that I, I think we need to consider.
Forge Road can be entered on two sides and it's a daily occurrence to wait behind garbage trucks while they do their pickup. I mean, that's nothing new.
Other commercial establishments on Old Forge Road, they get their garbage picked up there.
In front, on Old Forge Road?
Yes, they do.
Thank you for bringing it.
We, we have to move on to other cases. Let's adjourn this and we will uh, bring this up again in a month and see if we can solve it.
So what, what's the resolve here? For one month, we're going to be moving it to Old Forge.
Well, we have to call the garbage company and have to see if it's a possibility that they'll come and
All the other garbage companies do it.
That's why I say give it a month and we'll review it.
Right. Leah, when did you change the waste management?
I don't understand the result. We're, we're going to try it for one month?
Yeah, you gotta, first of all, they have to find out if it can even be done there.
It's such a small company that they use.
I thought you said waste management.
Superior company. It's, we, we, it's a different company that was bought out. And that's why we have all new cans and recycling cans. They, they come on, that's why they switched today.
Fabulous, fabulous. So that means they
Mary Ann, we spoke about it.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, folks, we have to move on to other cases.
Thank you so much.
Okay, well.
Yes, thank you.
Namaste.
Okay, we have in front of us uh, a subdivision application. And it is uh, from Rodrigo Maria Carlos, PB number twenty dash eleven three seven C. It's a sketch plan review for a subdivision application of a ten point five acre lot into two parcels. One of seven point five acres and three acres in the R three zoning district at two oh seven John Joy Road in Woodstock. So
You want to go back?
This application has come before the board um, with a recommendation from the building inspector, CEO. Who said they have uh, looked at this lot and looked at the situation and um, see no issues with it. Now, everybody on the board looked, it's a fairly straight, like square lot. Um, that they're taking like a third off on, I believe, the eastern side.
There are wetlands on the lot.
The road, what, what Judy?
There are wetlands on the lot. I can show you the map.
Well, the wetlands inspector said no. I saw the map too. But as I just said, I showed you on the um, Chestnut Hills subdivision, the wetlands are 500 feet different than what they show on the map. So, um,
Which end of it are they cutting off? By the road?
I believe it'd be the eastern end away from the wetlands.
Well, the land runs north and south.
Right then, okay, there'll be the northern end.
That's where the wetlands show up. There's a stream.
Right, in between the two lots, right?
Um, I don't know where the dry, where the lot is going to be cut, so I don't, that's why I'm asking the question.
Well, typically we would appoint a, a, a um, a planning board member to do a site inspection. So if somebody wants to volunteer to do that, um, and walk the lot, to make sure, because that's the only issue. I, I saw the same thing Judy. I saw that little round uh, federal wetland. And so there's two possibilities. One is they stay completely away from it. If it's there. And the other is to um, have it delineated. It's a little bit of an issue because um, the building inspector, as you know, and CEO is also the wetlands inspector. And I believe that the wetlands inspector said there was no wetlands. I believe that's what I saw in her recommendation to the board.
Well, I've got, I've got Hudsonia too and I don't know if she counts those.
Well, then I think we need to uh, have a site inspection. Before we set a public hearing. This is a sketch plan review anyway, so um, we have time to do that. Clearly, if there's wetlands there, they have to be delineated and avoided. So, um, does anybody want to volunteer to do a site inspection?
I wish I could, but of course, that's not something I can do.
Um, it's hard for me because I'm a wetland inspector, so it puts me in a difficult spot to go out there and professionally say that. So if someone else were to look at the site and say, oh, it looks like it, then we could ask the building inspector or the, or the wetlands inspector to check it out.
I can tell you, I can show you what I see without the Hudsonian layer turned on. If you would like me to do that. It's a very quick process.
Yeah, sure, sure. I, I, I know it, I've seen it, but yeah, sure, show us, show everybody.
Okay, that is the property.
This is Stuart. I don't know if you can hear me.
Hi Stuart.
Yeah, uh, John Joy Road is not far from where I live, so I can go eyeball the
Oh, great.
property. I, I'd like to talk to you before I go, but I can, I can sign up for that.
I can give you information too, so you go, so you don't feel like you're going empty handed.
Well, you see Judy, they want to cut three acres off of that lot.
Right. I believe that this is probably the, 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 the known wetland.
Right.
And this is the stream. And Hudsonia, which I can turn on in just a shake here, sees more of it as wetlands. But they don't have any legal standing in that matter. So this is the one that the little, the little blue circle, which I assume is a federal wetland or state wetland. And this is the stream and the marshy areas around the stream. This, I don't know. It's just what shows up on their, on their shape file.
Judy, can you just, after tonight, tomorrow, next week, send me a picture of that? So when I compile some stuff for Stuart to go, then he can have a picture of this.
Piece of cake. I will do that.
Thank you.
That's a good idea. Thank you.
I'll take care of you Stuart.
Well, you always have.
I would say, I would say that uh, Mr. Carlos has to have those wetlands delineated. I mean, they're clearly there.
Yep.
I mean,
I'll send you a PDF.
Stuart will go take a look. And uh, you know, if it's all desert, okay, then, then we're good. It seems to me if there's a stream and wetlands there, they have to be put on the map.
Yep.
So, um,
Recognizing that Hudsonia has often seen things that were not previously on maps.
Oh, I know. Believe me, I know. I think they are very good about that. Very, very good about that. So um, when Stuart takes a look, um, and then uh, I believe we'll have to advise Carlos to have them delineated and, and put on his map so they can be avoided. All right, so that takes care of that. Now, um, unfinished businesses to adopt a draft resolution for J F H Development LLC and David Anderson and Tony Sotira. PB case twenty dash twelve nineteen. So um, again Stuart, if you would like to adopt this draft resolution, we can go with it. I can't hear you Stuart. Stuart?
You're muted.
How bad?
I can't hear you. There you are.
Nice.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Um, before I make a motion, is there anything that needs to be discussed or people want to discuss about this? If not, I'll make a motion. Hearing none?
I don't. Does anybody else on the board have a, an issue with it?
Yeah, this seemed pretty simple last time.
Yeah, yeah, it was straightforward.
So is voting, but you know. Okay, so I move to, for the planning board to adopt a draft resolution as drafted for J F H Development LLC and David Anderson and Tony Sotira, PB number twenty dash twelve nineteen.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you Stuart. Now another item on the agenda is this training for harassment uh, in the workplace. Um, it's a requirement. So th- there's one coming up. It's a, a webinar. Forget the date.
August twenty seventh at five thirty. And you just need to pre-register and then they send you the email. It took us thirty-five minutes in the office when we did it. And it'll give you credit for this year.
What's the date of the last one that we all went to?
They, they mail it to the town, I guess, to, to, to wherever your municipality is and then I'll make sure you guys see them and get credit if it gets to me.
Yeah, I have a question. Is that the same presentation that's on eight twenty-five? Wasn't there something at eight twenty-five, a webinar, or is that different?
No, I think they've done, this is the third or fourth that they've offered.
I went one in November.
Right, we did one in November, but this is the one for this, the one in November was for, I think this gives a whole nother year. They went with a new company.
You have to do it annually.
Yes, and the, and the town went with a new company, so we were, we had access to webinars. We had to go in before. So now this is a webinar.
But what's on August twenty-fifth at, and at around eleven o'clock, I seem to recall. Isn't there something?
There's more than one.
Is it the same?
There's more than one date.
The prior harassment trainings were nine, nine or nine thirty. So I don't know, the eleven o'clock isn't ringing a bell for the twenty-fifth.
Well, whatever the date was, it was during the daytime, I started to call, because I wrote it down in my book for the twenty-fifth. Is that still on?
If you got an email.
Yeah, okay.
Just check your email. I can double check my email tomorrow. I, I couldn't, I had an awful computer night. I couldn't get, I couldn't get logged on from home and then I had no sound. Um, but I can double check and touch base with you tomorrow Stuart.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Melissa, in, in my particular case, I work for a company and uh, we have to do it in company anyway.
Yep, so you give me your certificate and I make a copy and forward it on.
Okay, great. Very good.
I'll sign up for one of them.
Thank you.
Okay.
Did you get my certificate yet?
I haven't gotten mine yet. So I think soon though. They said about a month.
Okay.
The town just received the first group of them. We took it, went July, the end of July, right? We took ours, like the twenty-ninth. They just received it like on Monday. So the next group of people that took it should be coming within the next week or so.
Okay, thank you Ashley.
You're welcome.
Ryan, you have a que- oh, I thought about, uh, I have a question for you Melissa. Has there been any word on um, having to go back to in-person meetings?
Nothing. We are, they extended until September four. So our next meeting is September third. So we will do Zoom September third. We have a public hearing scheduled. I also will schedule one or two other cases. Um, we're going to keep moving and then we'll see what happens. So our following meeting, so if our next meeting is September third, the following one is the September seventeenth. So it'll be interesting to see what happens between September third. We almost got good for timing because last time we were pretty close because Cuomo should announce something either way. And then as soon as I know, I'll keep you posted like I did prior.
Okay, uh, because it's very good that Judy has, or I guess anybody can now put these maps up on the screen.
Great, I'm so great.
My concern was um, going over detailed subdivision maps. We used to put them on the table and everybody lean over each other and look at it. And uh, I was worried how we would do that, but since Judy's able to put these plans on the screen, we'll be okay.
I, I went to the community center with Michelle. They had a zoning meeting, appeals. And honestly, I looked at like two tables and I was like, for the seven, eight of us to be there, I'm going to need four tables to fit us all, so we're all six feet apart. And I left like kind of flustered. So we'll get through whatever happens. But know that I'm always thinking about you guys and your safety too.
Is there, is there a, a projection system there?
I don't know. I believe they do have, I believe they do have a screen above the entrance door. Which would mean that the projector is
I know, I went to a meeting there about the Broadway uh, streetscape and they had the projector, but whether that's built in or not.
No, I believe that that's ours. Um, I can double check with Bill, but I'm pretty sure it's a, a permanent fixture up in like the light
And a projector that hooks up to the computer?
Yeah.
Okay, well, then we'll be able to use the map the same way or even better than we do in the town board
Right.
uh, building.
Yeah, we need the, we need a PA too. We need mics and, and, and PA in there.
Ashley and I have been talking a little bit about brainstorming and trying to figure that too. I, that was also another concern I had. There's no way we're going to be able to hear it after the fact. Yeah. I, so it's all in my head.
Personally, I, I would be surprised that the governor would not let us continue Zoom because it's, it's sort of what, uh, until this is over, 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 um, it's kind of what the top professionals are suggesting. So.
I had my first COVID test today.
Congratulations.
Before you get the results.
Well, it's because I'm in the opera. I should have them by Monday.
I've heard people got the results in like forty-eight hours and then I've seen people wait fourteen days.
Well, I did it at the doctor's office. So I guess they've got pull, you know? Because they told me two or three days.
Okay, folks, well, stay safe.
Excuse me.
Yep.
I'm the last person to typically do this. Um, I want to circle back for a minute or two on place ninety-nine. What exactly was determined or decided?
Basically, what was determined is you have two parties arguing with each other and we're not the uh, we're not the ones to solve that.
That's right.
You know, they got issues, which I know you, you've explained, but it, it's much like the Spinelli situation with the green thing. It's not something in our purview. I mean, I mean personally, I don't like seeing the garbage anywhere out there, but you gotta run a business and you gotta have garbage, so.
And so, but what was decided?
I think three days. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was, yeah, I was going to see if I was right. Um sir, give it a month. Then they'll come back to us. They're going to try it in the new spot. Which Mary Ann and George were very happy about. And then they'll come back and be in front of you and tell you how it went. And then we decide whether or not
It's not just trying the new spot. It's actually see if they, the garbage company can do it.
Right.
To see if it fits.
Brian, from our perspective, I, from my perspective, all that was done was that the sketch plan review was continued to another date.
Right.
In the meantime, suggestions were made to see if they can come to some kind of workable arrangement, but we're not dictating it. What we're doing is reviewing a sketch plan. And uh, and they put onto that their dispute about where should the garbage be in front of whose building, building and so on. But you know, that, that raises probably a lease issue between uh, the landlord and the tenant. But from the planning board's perspective, all that is before us is a sketch plan reviewed to change the site plan from what the approved site plan says where it should be and some other place. It's called a modification. So that's, that's where we're at. So the sketch plan review will come up again at a future date and we'll see where they're at.
I mean I'm sorry, Brian was trying to indicate to us that there's something else going on behind the scenes besides the garbage location, but we can't deal with that. And as, as, as Stuart said, it's just a site plan review.
I have two thoughts on that, please. And I'm, I'm sorry for taking, taking more time on this.
Right.
One, the reason I brought up litigation is because, correct me if I'm wrong on this, historically, if there's litigation between two parties, then we do nothing. We step back until it's resolved. And I think we've done that previously. Am I incorrect on that or am I correct?
Not to my knowledge. Litigation has never really come before us. The only time it did was with the Yankee Town Pond. Trying to do a subdivision of land underwater that didn't belong to the person that was trying to do it. And um, we just didn't get involved. We just said, we can't, look, we can't hear the case.
There's also litigation pending on the lodge case. It's actually a look back dispute between the present applicant and the past owner. But that doesn't stop us from staying in our land and doing what we have to do.
But what I what I understood on the litigation was we can't see them if we're under fire, if they're suing us as the planning board. But whatever's going on outside of us, I don't think that, that's how I got it coming in with conversations with Therese.
I guess my only concern is, and you, rarely am I this vocal on these things, as you know. This no pun intended, stinks. And everybody that's aware of it in the town knows that. And if, but nobody wants to stand up. Everybody wants to either stay in their lane or just say, I can't talk about it. And I just, that's not, if we can't protect our small businesses in these types of situations, if we can't find a way, and we found ways in the past. I mean, this is a single mother running a well-established business with, and I know it's not in our purview, but with exemplary marks and, and high reviews from all departments within Woodstock. How many dumpsters are there in the footprint in the town? You know, there's probably 40 fricking dumpsters in, you know, a two square mile area. They, that group is as fastidious as they could be. And uh, and I would just like to figure out a way to help them. Was I biased on this before? No, I know both parties, but I, I am biased now.
Brian, maybe you can uh, uh, act as an informal mediator outside of the planning board and try and bring peace to the situation. Because if, if you're concerned about protecting small businesses, well, Win Morrison is a business also, and so is the landlord.
But they don't complain.
They don't what?
They haven't been complaining. I know that for a fact. Win Morrison is hardly there.
So what's the genesis of this dispute? Or do you know?
I, I, I'm told. I'm told, and I've heard this from others, that the owner wants to turn that space into a boutique hotel.
What space?
The whole space.
The whole building?
Yeah. But the tenant has a 10-year lease.
They, they claimed that Win Morrison had a problem with the garbage. Stuart has a point.
I, I know they claim that, but I'm here to tell you.
Get something and write it.
That's, this is why when we do uh, site interviews for small businesses in town. And we really spend time on where the garbage is. We, we, we spend a lot of time on that. At this particular postage stamp lot, it doesn't give us much choice.
Where is it supposed to be as of now? On Rock City Road?
What is this? It, it is on Rock City Road? I thought it was supposed to be in the alley, according to the site.
No, when they move it for pickup, they take it out of the alley and put it on the road.
And that says, says that in the site plan?
And then they put it right back. Brian? Yeah? Why Leah does not want the garbage in that fenced, in front of that fenced area? She does want it in the fenced area. No, I mean, why doesn't she want it on Old Forge Road? Why is that? Would you want, I mean, you're, would you want, uh, you know 12 or 10 cans in front of your place? Do the cans stay out there all the time or they just go out? They stay out there that night. And the thing is, nothing is broken now. Everything is working fine. Except for a landlord that is I, I, my guess is, and this is speculation, is, has other motives. And there's a consistent pattern. They put a door, and I learned this through the building department. I, I learned it through Tom. They put a door in the basement, so they, they couldn't pass through in the space. They've done other things to impede in, in the owner of garden just tries to play nice. But it's just it's really unfortunate. I, I Are they the only ones who have cans there in that area of Rock City Road? Or are there other businesses that put their cans there too? You know, it's a good question. I don't know if Win has, I think Win has a space back there. I went back there today just because I was in between meetings and I wanted to see what the hell was going on. And I, I helped them out last year, so I've, I've, you know, I've natureed deed back there, hosted, so to speak. I'm familiar with the business. I've sat Mary Ann before when she comes in and demands to be seated because she's the owner. Even though there's a line in the cafe and they always accommodate her. Always. They've always played nice.
Talking about the restaurant?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Well, I like Stuart's idea. If, if Brian wants to try to negotiate a peace deal. My only other suggestion, which it's money, I understand, is that they have a private pickup. You know, somebody with a small dump truck comes by in the morning or pickup truck or whatever.
Isn't there pickup private now? It's a private service?
And, and go to the dump. I mean, that's the only option I could think of. All right, folks, well
Thank you for letting me talk about this and discuss it. And thank you for your input and
Okay, everybody. Thank you so much for your participation. And we'll see you all next time.